All please, my plan.
Mayor Sagada.
Present.
Mayor Protim Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Chatterley.
Present.
Commissioner Chavis.
Present.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Present.
Could you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the highest states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to recognize everybody that's here tonight. Big crowd. Next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, October 9th, 6:00 PM here in the chambers. At this time, we don't have any proclamations, but I do have a plaque we would like to present, which was already presented, to Mayor Protim Lindy Schuster, Commissioner of City Rattone. She is now a certified municipal official, which is a long way saying she's now Molly certified. She went through everything, and she received this plaque at the conference in Roswell in August. So Lindy, congratulations.
Thank you.
Alrighty. This time we'll take any comments from the general public. If there's anyone to address us, please come to the podium, state your name. Say none, we will move on to committee reports from commissioners. We'll start with Commissioner Chatterley.
Hey, I've been busy and we missed a month, so this is gonna take a little bit. I apologize in advance. I first wanted to start with the branding team report. We have met consistently since we formed in April after the public input meetings, as you know. And I've been, I don't know, voluntold that I'm the branding team leader, so I've been organizing the meetings and getting everything together and been the point of contact. So we held meetings on August 3rd, August 5th, August 10th, August 28th, and September 17th. Most of the meetings were with the branding team or Leighton Moon or a combination thereof, who's the design firm. And then often Rob and Bobian from New Mexico Main Street joined us. And we've also had a lot of constant email feedback as we're trying to move forward. So I'd really like to thank the Center for Sustainable Community for hosting our meeting space and letting us use the Zoom web conferencing, which is pretty cool, so we can talk to the designers and whatnot. We have a really great team, but I'd especially like to thank Brenda Ferry and Jessica Barfield, who've been able to attend every single meeting, so they've been really supportive. We've made a lot of progress on the logo. We've gone through multiple drafts and versions with lots of discussion and feedback, and we discussed pretty much every element from the design, the icons, the text, the color. Every tiny bit of that logo is gonna have meaning behind it and something authentic to Rattone. So we recently reached a consensus on the logo, which was great. And we just received yesterday the proposed finishing touches to the basic style guide. So that's gonna be rolling out here pretty soon. As soon as we give our feedback and approval to Leighton Moon, then they're gonna package the logo up for us with the files, and we'll be able to use that along with the first iteration of the style guide. That will include color codes, typography, and logo usage guidelines. And our goal this whole time has been to have a really versatile brand that can be used in a variety of marketing campaigns, and to have a logo that transfers well not only on stickers or print, but also embroidery, any medium, so that it's simplistic enough that it can do that. Right now, the launch is set for the light parade, so we'd like to do that in conjunction with that. The brand launch will include a social media campaign, the history of the branding effort, an official unveiling of the brand. We'll distribute some quality logoed items throughout Rattone, and we'll also have digital elements for website and social media. We also hope to have a float for the light parade along with a few other surprises. So we'll be working on that in early October. We'll probably meet again and start getting going on that. I didn't know if you had any questions about that process, or that's kind of all I have to report.
Sounds pretty interesting.
It's exciting, it's good.
Yeah, it is exciting.
When I got the file yesterday with the finalized, I was super excited. So I'm very anxious to unveil that. Also, Mayor Sagada and I have been attending meetings with the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board as part of the working group. On September 10th, we had a joint working group session with Lori Bunker and Jose Archuleta, and we held that at the Center for Sustainable Community. Jessica Barfield was also in attendance. At our previous working session, we had kind of come to a basic consensus of priorities for that promotional funding that would benefit Rattone as a whole. So at this particular meeting, we worked through line item adjustments based on those priorities within the Lodger's Tax Promotional Fund. We also suggested a new description of some line items to better explain the possible expenses. And we agreed upon a request for an additional 5% or $20,000 of non-promotional funds to be moved to the promotional fund to bolster the contingency plan, our contingency fund, and allow for a media management project, as the suggestion. I compiled all the suggestions into a proposal, which should go before the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board, and then would come to us for final approval, to see what you all think. The goal of all of this has been to get the maximum leverage for our promotional funds for Rattone. And at this point, Chairwoman Bunker and Board Member Archuleta have stated that they are finished with their involvement, but have made some suggestions to us for non-promotional ideas. Moving forward, this is kind of what I see. Once we get the promotional line item budget proposal is approved or adjusted by the commission, then I would plan to help craft a better Lodger's Tax Fund request packet, similar to what Gallup uses, which we've kind of seen. This new funding request packet would support the agreed-upon vision that we have for leveraging the Lodger's Tax Promotional Funds. I'd like to revise the request packet with input from, hopefully, a contracted media specialist, the media management person, which we have yet to approve, so the sooner the better on that. And then after we would finish that packet, then I would work towards prioritizing and focusing the non-promotional Lodger's Tax Funds for the best good of attracting tourism to Rattone. Based on the input we received at the general meeting we had and then the working sessions we've had. Both of those board members had a lot of input on ideas. And then I've been trying to go to the Lodger's Tax Board meetings regularly and keep open communication with them, and I know the mayor also attends, so I didn't know if you wanted to add anything to that.
I didn't bring my book. I forgot to bring my book.
Yeah, the last meeting, there was some discussion. Probably the most important thing was Diane Tripp was there from the chamber to talk with us. I know Dee's here tonight, so she had a good conversation with the Lodger's Tax Board.
You mentioned Ms. Bunker and Archuleta are through?
They said that after that part, they are finished.
With the special... Oh, okay.
Not with, I'm sorry, not on the Lodger's Tax Board, with the special working group. I should have clarified that, yeah. Let's see. The Rattone Beautification Coalition, I haven't really been able to attend its meetings, but I've been going back and forth through email with them. The summer went well. Like to especially thank Lisa Camp, who watered and checked the flowers every single morning from the end of May through September 15th, which was amazing. And special thanks to RPS and Parks and Rec Director Jared Chatterley for keeping the lights working through all the storms and the vandalism and the different problems they had. And special thanks to the many business owners and homeowners who supported this effort with flowers and beautification of their properties. It's been lovely to drive through town. When I was down at Molly in Santa Fe, was it last two weeks ago? I did hear from a trustee from Springer that we had a trickle-down effect, which was confirmed again in an email today by Diane Tripp, that we inspired Springer and that they did some flowers at their chamber and some other businesses. So that was really exciting to hear that we've kind of, it's good, we're trendsetters. The summer banners will be taken down this Saturday morning. If anyone wants to help, we're gonna be here at the city lot at 7:00. We'll also be disconnecting the lights. They hope to have the lights back on for winter. They've been waiting to hear back from a possible donor for winter banners, and ideally, they'd like Four Seasons, but so far, we don't have the funding for that. If anyone would like to contribute to the Beautification Coalition, Grow Rattone is our fiscal agent and can accept those donations. And if you'd like to help, you can contact Jared Chatterley at the Aquatic Center.
Yeah, I've heard already comments about the flowers being gone, and people are, "What happened?"
They were all going to, I was actually helping take those down one morning, but they're going to seed pretty badly and straggly. There are few stayed on First Street with a few people watering, but it was time. Yeah, sadly, our weather has lasted a long time this year, so it's been kind of strange. I'm gonna go ahead and do a brief report on Molly, even though it's not technically a committee, but just... So I did attend the 20 Hours of Governance Training with the Municipal League Leadership Institute from September 12th to 14th in Santa Fe. This is the second of three certified municipal official trainings I'd like to attend this year, if our budget allows that, which Lindy just graduated from. Throughout the training, I was able to network with more than 30 other elected officials and multiple presenters from around the state. Topics we discussed were zoning, the Open Meetings Act, conducting meetings and using motions, budgeting. We had a session on the 2020 census, which was kind of interesting. Public communication, municipal bonds, governance, problem solving, and looking to New Mexico's future. What I really wanted to touch on was, in one workshop, we were challenged to list the biggest problems facing our communities and discuss strategies for solving these with possible results. And almost every single community after infrastructure listed the dilapidated buildings, unsightly lots, and the difficulty of cleaning up their town. So it was very much a bonding experience as we discussed these things and talked about the legal concerns and the concerns for community pride and whatnot in our communities. There were some great ideas presented, most of which started from the community and worked their way up. Some communities have grassroots groups for green spaces or something like the Rattone Ambassadors efforts, picking up trash, or the facade squad. And I kind of shared about the Beautification Coalition, and people really were impressed by that partnership. As a group, we kind of reached this consensus together that the city's part at the very least should be strong code enforcement and keeping our properties in good shape. We have some work to do here, but I'm optimistic and we are not alone. That was the big thing, and it is a statewide problem. I discussed some of my ideas after I came back with Mr. Berry. And looking forward in Rattone, I'd love to see us develop some kind of community board or task force that might help target these problems or study what's been done in other states, and maybe get some more grassroots efforts going on in our neighborhoods. And I think this could easily lend itself to something regional. Talking a lot to the mayor Clayton and some representatives from Santa Rosa and other places kind of in our neck of the woods. They have a lot of ideas and a lot of frustration too. So I'd just like to thank Rattone, the citizens of Rattone, for allowing me to attend and supporting the education of your public officials. That was good. Couple more, still going, sorry. The Senior Center. I attended the Culvax County Senior Center Incorporated Board meetings on August 20th and September 18th at the Rattone Senior Center. There's been, year to date, there's been 2,477 meals served at the center, 4,500 home-delivered meals, 1,228 units of transportation, 236.5 chore hours, and 542 homemaker hours. Generally, the percentages are just a bit above this year's goals so far, but things are looking good. They did receive a one-time incentive for home-delivered meals for the last fiscal year of $12,870. That'll go back into food expenses as part of the budget. Mayor Scott also presented the ICIP plan there. The priorities were new vehicles and kitchen and HVAC renovations. They also had an assessment from the Non-Metro Area Agency on aging with a few findings, and they were already making corrections on those. There is a new board member, Monty Johnson from Simroon, is welcome to the board. And then Monica Finkbone from the Springer Center is going to be the new program assistant for the corporation. She'll be doing a lot of cross-training, especially to back up financial duties and possible site visits, and she's gonna be starting October 1st. The Rattone Senior Center is also planning a senior appreciation luncheon on October 27th at 1:00. That should have some entertainment and a nice meal, so we want to make sure and get the word out on that. And the board has decided to do some site visits, so the next meeting right now is tentatively scheduled in Simroon on November 20th at 10:00 AM. I don't know if you had anything else to add, Mayor, about the Senior Center?
No, you've got it.
Okay. Last one, one more, okay. North Central New Mexico Economic Development District. I was unable to attend in July due to family vacation. And then they're also meeting this Friday, which was a change from last Friday, so I have a conflict with that as well. I don't really have a good update at this time, but I know that they're still having problems and they're gonna be going into executive session regarding the state aging and long-term services and state auditor reports. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jacomo.
Yes, the RPS Board, the meeting was held on August 29th at 2018, 5:30 PM. Office Manager/Bookkeeper Jessica Gonzalez presented the financials and statistical information, and it was approved by the board. General Manager Senator Chavis reported to the board that power plant employee Anthony Menez fractured his left arm while descending from upper stairs and is scheduled for surgery today. He's been off, it looks like, about six weeks. Or will be off around six to eight weeks. Anything to add on that?
I missed that meeting.
That's all I had on the RPS Board. On the Library Board, Arthur Johnson Memorial Library Board was held this meeting on September 18th, 5:30. Library Director Thylin Wright reviewed with the board the annual state library report that you submitted on July 30th. This report is a very lengthy document covering all aspects of the library. The statistical information for month of July are as follows. Monies collected were $928.77. Donations were zero. Fines were $172.49. Copies made were $737.28. Memoras collected were $20. Month of July grand circulation was 5,497 items. Programs held in the library were 26, attended by 172 persons. Story hours held in the library were three, attended by 129 persons. The statistical information for the month of August are as follows. Monies collected were $1,956.70. Donations were $1,364.44. Fines collected were $161.35. Copies made, $430.91. Memoras collected were zero. So the grand circulation of 4,490 items. Programs held in the library were 20, attended by 83 persons. Story hours held in the library were two, attended by 18 persons. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Chavis.
I do. First off, on what Mrs. Chatterley said. I had a local businessman that approached me and told me that he traveled around looking at the businesses, and he went to Roswell, Clovis, Silver City, Las Cruces, Farmington, Grants, and he said the same thing that they talked about, but Rattone is in better shape than every one of those according to him. So. The Rattone Water Board had a meeting on September 18th. Right now, Lake Maloya is holding its own considering what's been happening. Mr. Campbell and the Water Department has been trying to supplement our water supply, but every time they get ready to do it, they have a weather incident, and it's unable to pump the water from Simroon up here at this time. We discussed the Brilliant Heart Waterline Project. MS Construction started last week and are continuing with good results. Mr. Campbell gave reports on the filter plant project, wastewater plant nutrient removal project, Rattone Filter Plant Project, the Lake Maloya service spillway design. These are all projects that are underway at the present. Heard a financial report for August from Ms. Geneva Treille. They received approval of the final budget for the fiscal year and certified final fiscal year budget. That's all I have on the Water Board. Mr. Campbell isn't here tonight to change anything, so...
I think he did say they started pumping today from Simroon.
Did he?
Yeah.
Well, last Friday, he was set to turn the pumps and was gonna pump. And they had less than a quarter of an inch rain up the canyon, and within 30 minutes, it blocked everything again, so... The Financial Advisory Board met September 30th with Mrs. Antonucci. We received the final budget approval for fiscal year '18 audit schedule. Approved the August 28 financial report for presentation to the City Commission this evening. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Protim Schuster.
Okay. I also attended the Water Board, but Commissioner Chavis covered that pretty thoroughly, so, very good. On that same day, earlier in the day, Tuesday, September 18th, the Housing Board met. I was unable to attend, but I was able to speak with Mr. Bak. In summary, he said the main item on the agenda that day was that tomorrow, meaning September 26th tomorrow, they will be opening bids, bid opening for bathroom redos for 60 units, both in Rattone and in Maxwell. And Saturday, September 22nd, the Chamber held a thank-you dinner for the volunteers at the Visitor Center. It was very, very well put together. Everyone who attended was very well fed. They were, I'm gonna go ahead and ask Dee how many restaurants chipped in with food, do you know?
Numerous. So many, there's no way we could have eaten at all. And actually, the fire department came and picked up leftover stuff.
Oh, good, good.
And so did the police. So they got to enjoy some of that, but lots of our restaurants, too many to even name.
Right.
So many restaurants.
It was very good food.
And they're very grateful, yes.
Yes. And I think the volunteers felt appreciated.
Yes, they did.
And our mayor gave a nice little talk, and...
I was volunteered by Mayor Protim.
He was. But you did well.
Thank you.
The Northeast New Mexico Educational Board meeting was held yesterday, September 24th. The primary item on that agenda was confirming the name change and will in the future be known as, and this is just a Doing Business AS name, because it is officially the Northeast New Mexico Educational Board. But it will be the Center for Community Innovation. So the other items on that agenda were mainly speaking about RFPs with economic development and partnerships with Grow Rattone as well as Main Street. Creative Startup Proposal, which is a collaboration proposal in conjunction with Trinidad in their creative downtown inspiration. And looking at becoming a high school equivalency test center. So those are the main items on that agenda. And then as Mayor Sagada mentioned, he and I, as well as Mr. Berry, attended the New Mexico Municipal League, which was the last week of August/September, 28th through the 31st in Roswell, which was full of information, and I do not have copious notes on that right now. But it was a very, very productive meeting to attend, or convention.
Impossible.
Yeah. Oh, I should note that our own mayor was elected as vice president of the Municipal League.
Thank you. Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Alrighty. As for myself, let's see. Commissioner Chatterley talked about the seniors and the Lodger's Tax Board, so I'm covered there. Commissioner Jacomo talked about RPS, covered there. You just hit the conference, so I don't have any reports. I do. Thank you. Alright. Moving on, to Item 7, business part of our meeting. Item A, approval of the September 11th, 2018 regular commission meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the September 11th minutes.
One second. A motion and a second to approve the minutes. Is there any further discussions? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye? Opposed? Action carries, thank you. Item B, report to Commission. Rattone Chamber of Commerce, Dee Burks, President.
This is not a report, by the way. It's kind of a State of the Union, but not a report. Basically, tomorrow, the 26th, marks the two-year anniversary of the Chamber taking managerial control, I guess, over the Visitor Center. No one's more amazed than we are. We did have our volunteer recognition. Many of our volunteers have been with us from day one. So definitely want to recognize them, because it wouldn't happen without them. The businesses are seeing a really positive impact from that. And so, yeah, they donate more food every time we have one, which is a really good indication. They are seeing the benefit, they are enjoying that really good relationship with our community partners and businesses, and so that's going very, very well. We will be compiling those numbers for a report as to how the Visitor Center has gone numbers-wise. I took a look at them preliminarily, the first part of this week and today, which would be yesterday and today, basically. I was really curious to see how the fires had affected those numbers and where we stood, and it was really interesting. And so I'm anxious to compile those over the next few weeks, so you all can see them. Up until May, we were running anywhere from 15% to 20% ahead on a month-to-month comparison with the previous year. When the fires broke out in May, it dropped our numbers pretty significantly. Not horrible, but it was a noticeable decline. And what I noticed in looking at these just the past two days was the decline in Texans. We generally run about 70% Texan, and in June and July, it dropped to about 30%. The decline was dramatic from Texas. And so, good to know that Highway 64 is so vital for many Texans traveling through. Those fires, of course, we know they did not do us any favors, but the Visitor Center has recovered well as visitors' numbers have come up. And so we're still gonna be somewhere around the 20,000 mark for number of people served. We were on pace to do more, 24,000, and so it affected us. But I have every anticipation that this next year, those numbers will be back up. But I'll bring all of that, so you can see it visually and have something to actually hold in your hand. As to how we were doing, I'll also bring you a report and number of volunteer hours and the value added back to this commission and to the city in terms of dollars and cents as to what those volunteers are, of course, they're worth more than we could ever put a number on. But we will attempt to do that and bring you those numbers again as we did last year. The other reason for me to be here now, as opposed to actually presenting the report, is because, as you all know, we are losing our tourism coordinator. Today was her last day. So that's been something that was extremely unfortunate from our perspective. It could have been avoided in numerous ways, and it's really unfortunate. Now we are going to set about finding a new tourism coordinator. Those are very big shoes to fill. And in order for us to fill those effectively, we feel like some changes are gonna have to be made. The major change that we would like to see made is that that person no longer reports to the Lodger's Tax Board, that that person reports to the commission. I would also like to see those reports come from us. There is no other employee, no other person that is funded by either Lodger's Tax or any other form of city support that comes to a public meeting and is raked over the coals once a month. That is absolutely unacceptable. And I don't think that's a good position to put an employee again in. They have no power, they're not directing their activities, we are. We hire, we fire. So therefore, I feel like the Chamber should be the one taking that flak when there is flak. The employee should not. It's been a very, very difficult position because, well, for a number of reasons. Especially when you have a person that's doing a very, very good job. And they choose to leave because specifically, they're being raked over the coals by a board that has no power to hire or fire them. It just can't continue. So we would like to see that change made. There's a line item in our MOU that states they report to the Lodger's Tax Board. We would like to see that changed, where either the Chamber makes that report to the Lodger's Tax Board, or the Chamber makes that report to you all, or both. We would prefer both, simply because that meeting is not recorded. And as has happened in the past, word that trickles down from that board to you as commissioners is not necessarily factual. And so we would like the direct report to be to you all, so you know what's going on, what is or is not happening, and you hear it straight from us, rather than putting the employee in that position. So that is something that we feel really strongly about, because we had a person with a very, very strong backbone, and they couldn't handle it. So when someone is in training and learning that position, because it's not an easy position, we really, we're not gonna keep anybody if we continue that. And that's really the bottom line. So we would like to see that one change made, where we're able to protect that employee. that employee, and any issues are dealt with directly with us. If you all, or even someone from the board, feels they should be doing something different, that should be taken with us, up with us as the supervisor, not with the employee in a public meeting. And so we feel like that's the way it needs to go. So we really want input from you all, and we have not posted the job because we wanted to see those changes, and we're waiting to post that job. We want to fill that position as quickly as we can, while we still have Melissa to train that person, and she has agreed to do that. But we really feel like that has got to be addressed. And it has to be addressed by you all. So we would appreciate your consideration for that.
Okay.
Do you all have any questions of me?
I'll do this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item C, deliberate and act on correction to ordinance numbering from the September 11 Commission Meeting. Number 998 was used and should have been number 999. Mr. Berry, my client.
Mayor and Commissioner, at the last meeting, we had approved an ordinance, and that was the one for the Co-Bank interfinancing. So we did issue a number, and it was discovered when I was compiling information for our next codification of ordinances, that 998 was actually assigned to the repeal of the one cent, which we adopted in July. So I just want to do this as a matter of record, so that our records will reflect accurately that the one that we adopted at the last meeting will be ordinance 999, and we can get that corrected before we do the supplement here in a couple months.
Okay.
We will also post a correction to the legal notice in the World Journal, and submit that to, it's Madril Spurling was our bond counsel on that ordinance. So we did reach out to them, and they just recommended that we do this as a matter of record.
Okay.
Then we're out of numbers after this.
Yeah, we're going to reach 1,000. So we do have an ordinance that you'll see at the October 9 meeting to adopt the supplement, and that'll be ordinance 999.
I'll make a motion to approve the correction of the ordinance numbering from September 11 to Commission Meeting, from the September 11 Commission Meeting, number 998 was used and should have been number 999.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to make the correction from 998 to 999. Is there any further discussion or questions? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item D, deliberate and act on fiscal year 2020 juvenile justice grant application submission. Mr. Berry?
Mayor, I will yield on these next couple items to our Treasury.
All righty.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet, I had put the first three pages of the grant application. I did provide you with a complete copy of the full narrative that gives a description of each program that we're proposing to provide for FY '20. You'll see the breakdown of the budget on page three. We are, we did get an increase in funding last year, so we are going to be requesting the same amount. We're not going to ask for an increase. So the total amount we're requesting is $160,003.02. This will allow us to continue employing a part-time continuum coordinator, and then we will be offering three programs, the Boys Council, the Girls Circle, and a restorative justice program. And those are the same programs that we've offered in the past. I have been working with CYFD, and we did make some revisions to the narrative portion, but that was all finalized today. And so, the complete grant package will be submitted no later than October 3. By noon is the deadline. So we'll be mailing this off next week, and then it'll go through a whole process of committee reviews, and we probably won't hear for several months as to the amount that we've been funded.
Okay. Are there any questions for Ms. Antonucci?
I'll make a motion to approve fiscal year 2020 juvenile justice grant application.
I'll second.
Do we need to include in that motion to have Mr. Berry as a signatory?
Oh, yes. If you could please give the city manager signatory authority. It has been drafted for his signature on page one, and then there's a couple certifications on page two.
I'll amend the motion to include that.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the justice grant application with Mr. Berry as a signatory. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item F, deliberate and act, or item E, I'm sorry. Deliberate and act on amendment to memorandum of understanding between the City of Raton and the City of Raton Continuum Advisory Board. My client.
Mayor and Commissioner, back in July, possibly June, I think it was July, we brought an MOU to you for approval. At the meeting that they held last week, the Continuum Advisory Board did decide to change their name, which was reflected in their bylaws as well. So part of the documentation that we have to submit with the grant application next week is a copy of our MOU. So we're just bringing this back to you to make that name change. They will now just be referred to as the City of Raton Continuum Advisory Board. Prior to that, it was the Colfax County Juvenile Justice Continuum Advisory Board. So that's the only change being made to this MOU. The rest of the terms remain the same.
All righty, any other questions for my client?
I'll move to approve the amendment to the memorandum of understanding between City of Raton and City of Raton Continuum Advisory Board.
I'll second.
Yeah, motion and a second to approve the amendment to the MOU between the City of Raton and City of Raton Continuum Advisory Board. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. All aye? Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item F now, deliberate and act on NMDOT Aviation Division Grant Agreement RTN-18-03, Amendment Number One, Taxway A, Phase Two Project. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, we've talked about Phase Two, the Taxway A reconstruction project over several meetings now. We have brought a grant agreement from State Aviation to the commission previously, and you had approved that. And what we're seeing here is an amendment to that previous agreement. So we had designed up the full project, and we didn't really know if we would build that in Phase Two and Three, or just Phase Two. But we let a project to build all of the remaining part of Taxway Alpha, about two-thirds of it. We took bids on that. Of course, it was more money than, to build it, was more money than we had planned on as far as grant funds. So we went back to the Federal Aviation Administration. They agreed to fund the entire project under Phase Two. So the entire project, we had talked about that recently, was awarded at about $1.3 million. That's construction and professional services. And I would report to you that the construction of the project is scheduled to begin about 1st of October, so we're ready to go. Now, with the agreement with Federal Aviation, as we had discussed, City of Raton agrees to provide 5% of the total project cost, and State Aviation agrees to provide 5% of the total project cost. So previously, you had an agreement with State Aviation in the amount of $41,000 and some change. However, 5% of this $1.3 million would be the amount you see in the agreement here now. So the agreement is revised, so that the State Aviation, under their Department of Transportation, Department of Transportation, would provide $65,951 to the construction of the project. By the way, that's also the City of Raton's obligation to the project as well, and we would go to the general funds for our share of that. So my recommendation is approval of the amendment, as you have in your packet. We will return that to State Aviation, and as we say, I think we're in line now to begin construction.
Cool. Would just also note that whoever makes the motion to please include Mr. Berry as a signatory on it.
Well, I'll make that motion to approve NMDOT Aviation Division Grant Agreement RTN-18-03, Amendment Number One, Taxway A, Phase Two Project, including allowing Mr. Berry to serve as the signatory.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second to approve the grant agreement with NMDOT. Is there any further questions, discussion? My client, can we have a roll call vote on that, please?
Mayor Pro Tim Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavis?
Yes.
Mayor Sagata?
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. Item G, deliberate and act on Resolution 2018-57, the August 2018 financial report. My client?
Or Mr. Berry? Mayor, I'll yield again to the Treasury.
Mayor and Commissioner, as reported by Commissioner Chavis, the Financial Advisory Board did meet last Thursday to review the financial report as of August 31. You'll see in your packet, we've provided you with the general fund financial summary. Our available cash as of August 31 was, and this is less our 1/12 reserve, was $1,822,779. The gross receipts tax distribution received in the month of September was significantly lower than we had anticipated. So you will see, I've summarized that for you as well. We're only 0.69% above our year-to-date budget projection. And so that, you know, is causing us some concern, because as we've talked in the past, we should be probably 3% to 4% above our budget projections well into probably November, December, because we will see, as construction lessens towards the end of the winter months, our GRT usually will drop. And so, we did talk also that we do have approximately $1 million in construction projects scheduled to be completed between September and December. So we're really going to be tracking the GRT closely the next couple months. We did have a department head meeting today, and so we are working individually with our departments to control and minimize spending and delay large purchases if needed. We hope that, you know, this could be a result of a correction. We don't know that. Could be also a result of the closure of Kmart. We could be seeing some of that. But we didn't have a lot of construction, other than the construction of the O'Reilly's, which was completed kind of in midsummer. And now we have some paving projects, Hospital Drive, First Street Project. Let's let discuss.
The construction we're looking at really is mostly the municipally-funded projects that we've talked about before, and I've got a report for you, an update on that. But there is quite a bit of construction, well, three projects in town that are funded with city funds. And I think the privately-funded construction, there's probably a minimal amount of that scheduled for the remainder of the year that we are hearing about currently.
So I think, we also discussed, the filter plant project is currently out to bid. So that is anticipated, that construction on that may start in spring. And so, we are hoping that that will boost our GRT as well later in the fiscal year. And then also, in years past, the big unknown will be the small cities assistance, which is definitely difficult to forecast. So we hope that it comes in at least what we budgeted, if not more. So with that, I've also provided you with the history report of the GRT, so you'll be able to kind of make some comparisons with past years. And then we've also provided you the financial report for all of the city funds, which is in your packet.
Mr. Berry, I'll, my client, when exactly do we usually get the small cities assistance? Is there a typical timeframe for that?
We usually receive that after the legislative session is over. So I believe if this is a 30-day session, then we probably would see it maybe late February, early March.
Yeah, we'll look for that in March. And that's kind of the big piece. We don't know. I mean, we hear that the state's budget is doing pretty well, and that's based on a formula with, using the compensating tax. So we would expect to get caught up a little bit there. But the nature of our department head meeting is really to be cautious with expenditures, you know, until then. Now, I think that construction we're looking at in the next fiscal year, probably rebounding a bit. I think there's going to be some more projects coming out there that are not strictly just funded by us, but a mixture of things. So I think we will see that, but not likely in the current fiscal year. But we've implemented some measures to really monitor the revenue side of it, and then control the expenditure side of it. So we'll report back to you as we go.
Yeah, just to note on the significance of this, if you look at your three years that they provided, for September, three-year average, the last three years have been $484,460. This year, we got $376,984.65. So that's a significant chunk.
Significant.
Yeah, so appreciate you all doing what you've done to address it and that, so...
Also, I just noticed on this page, I had made a last-minute change before I printed this. You'll see off to the side, there's a variance column, and it has $14,707. I had to do a journal entry, because we did receive the EMS distribution from State Department of Health, and it got posted to the wrong line item. So I guess when I made that correction, I should have corrected my bank column to clear up that variance. But I did make that correction, so apologize for that. I didn't correct that column.
Any other comments, questions?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-57, August 2018 financial report.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2018-57. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye? Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries, thank you. Item I, deliberate and act on Resolution 2018, or item H, let's do the budget adjustment first, shall we? 2018-58, Budget Adjustment Number One for Fiscal Year '19.
Mayor, I would just comment here that you have an amended resolution sitting on your desk. It's a change from what was in your packet, and the change is really highlighted, so you can see it. But it, and I'll let my client go through this, but that would reflect the lodgers tax issue that we talked about. And what we're recommending to the commission is, in lieu of a recurring 5% transfer from non-promotional to promotional uses, we would transfer cash at the present time, and then take the additional steps that we talked about as far as really establishing policies there, and then revisit this again at budget time.
So in addition to the amended resolution that you have, we've just got some minor line item adjustments. This is our first budget adjustment since we got the FY '19 budget approved at the last meeting. The legislative capital outlay under the Street Improvement Fund, that's for the purchase of the public works equipment that we'll be moving forward with here in the next few weeks. That award was in the budget for $150,000, but we were actually awarded $175,000. So that would be to increase that to reflect the act. So, that would be to increase that to reflect the actual amount awarded for capital outlay. And then the taxiway Phase Two, the final agreements were approved at the last meeting on that, so we were off by a dollar, so I wanted to correct that. And then also, in the last few months, we've completed the loan documents for the transfer station defeesence on that loan. And so, they've rebated us the excess loan funds to the solid waste fund. And then we also had a commitment and a fee that we had to pay. So, those line items are related to that transfer station loan. So, those are the only budget adjustments that we have at this time. Is there any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-58, fiscal year 19, budget adjustment number one.
A second. A motion and a second to approve Resolution number 2018-58. I guess I got a silly question.
Sure.
If this is the first budget for fiscal year 19, but we're still 28, that's why it's 2018-58, right?
Yeah, the numbering system for our resolutions through December will still.
Right.
It's a calendar year numbering system.
Gotcha. It was really fiscal year 18, 19.
Yeah. Got it.
Yeah.
Okay, so, that being said, we do have a motion and a second to approve Resolution number 2018-58. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. And now, item I, deliberate and act on Resolution 2018-59, authorizing the certification of City of Raton's 2018 capital asset inventory. Mr. Berry?
Mayor, listen, I think you have a note in your packet here that we need to do a little more work on that, so we're asking if you will keep this down the road until October.
Okay. We need a motion to postpone this till October.
I'll move to, move it to October.
Michaelan, is that, do we anticipate the second October meeting on this, sir?
Yes, Mayor Commission, and I'm working on, I can go over kind of what we, what we'll provide at the October 9th meeting. So, we have all of our fixed assets that I keep in a binder, and so I'll be compiling a report for you that actually is a summary of all of the various class, item classes that we have for all of our fixed assets. And so, I have to kind of go through a reconciliation process where I run a capitalization report and I reconcile that to the depreciation reports. So, I'm still kind of right in the middle of that. So, I will be prepared at the October 9th meeting to provide you with the complete report. And then I'll also have the complete listing by department of all assets, which is always available if you want to come in and view it. So, apologize, I didn't have that ready this evening, but at the October 9th meeting, if we could postpone that.
Sure.
Till then, that would be great.
So, you want to admit to the October 9th meeting?
Sure.
Sounds good. Okay. We have a motion to postpone item I to the October 9th meeting and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nothing? Okay, thank you. Item J, city manager's report. Mr. Berry?
Before you start the city manager report, yeah, do we have Schuster pass the fudge?
Oh. Wait a second on that last motion.
Mr. Jacomo?
I'm okay.
Come back.
Mayor, last Friday, I attended a meeting at the Albuquerque Office of Congressman Steve Pierce. He has set up an organization consisting of five communities to discuss commercial greenhouse operations in five communities that are looking to diversify their economy. So, Raton is one of those communities that was invited. That also includes Las Vegas, Grants, Deming, and Anthony. And so, we had all attended, representatives of those municipalities were in attendance. Also, there was Dr. Matthew Strong. Dr. Strong is an international expert on indoor farming, greenhouse design and operations. And also, Richard Lopez, he's a regional coordinator for the Department of Agriculture. So, at that meeting, we discussed indoor farming in general, specialized customer, specialized crops. We talked about the next steps. It's really an organizational meeting for these five communities where we really work together to meet a specific need for those specialized customers. And those specialized customers could be somebody like the Public Education Department that has a, an obligation for certain types of foods to be supplied in relatively large quantities. So, we went through some of those arrangements. We talked about the possibility of USDA financing options and eligibility for USDA funds. So, that really was a kickoff meeting, gathering information, letting information there. I'll follow up. Of course, we have some organization here in Raton with our community kitchen, our farmer's market, our community gardening efforts, and I think our role will be a little organization between those parties and this initiative. So, I'll work on that, report back to you as we go, but good information at that meeting. We have started construction on the projects that we've talked about so far. They're under construction and construction is progressing. That includes First Street, the Great Blocks Project. I think the note on that is we do have a homecoming parade on First Street on Friday. We will work with contractors as far as making sure that that's a safe environment for people attending and we would ask people to be cautious about those activities there. But we should be in pretty good shape for that and construction is progressing along. Hospital Drive, on Hospital Drive, I would make a comment that a portion of Hospital Drive is one-way traffic only. That's southbound traffic trying to get from 555 to the hospital and then northbound traffic will have to take the detour on turf. So, we've had a little confusion from people out there. We've improved the signage in the last couple of days and we would ask drivers out there to really be attentive to that signage and the construction activities out there. That's going to go on for the next six weeks or so. And then also, hard avenue and brilliant street waterline project is underway as Commissioner Chavis had stated, progress is moving along rather nicely on that project. We talked about the airport project beginning around October 1st. I will keep you apprised on that. We do have a plan to attend the Northeast Regional Transportation Planning Organization that's going to be September 26th in Natafire. So, we are anticipating preparation of a grant for the subsequent phase of our Great Blocks Project that would go through NERPO and then go to DOT for the Transportation Alternative Program, as we had talked about before. And I think that application is due in November, so a lot of work to be done on that. We have requested and we have received a notice of obligation from Department Finance Administration, their Community Development Bureau, for the capital funds that came from the legislature last year for Public Works equipment purchases. And so, the first thing we're working on is a wheel loader that we can purchase from the state price agreement. And we're in the process of finishing up the details on the purchase of that. Total amount of that is $147,673. When we get that taken care of, we'll report back to you on the asphalt recycling equipment that we've talked about. That's going to require a sealed bid and the Public Works Director is busy on preparation of that bid request. Currently, that'll take a little more time. Just an update on the report that Commissioner Chavis had given us in regard to the Simroon River. We have faced really challenging conditions with the condition, the post-fire conditions on the river. A lot of sediment, a lot of ash and debris, water quality issues. So, we have kept close track of that. The Raton Water Works has done a lot of work down there throughout the summer, but I would report that today is the first day that we were able to bring water from Eagleness Lake to the Simroon River into our treatment plant. So, that was accomplished today. I think the conditions are in pretty good shape right now. And we will, from now, at least until we get hard freezing temperatures, divert at least a portion of our water from Eagleness Lake and Simroon River into town and probably cut back on what we're diverting from Lake Malloy. So, the Lake Malloy water quality has been very good. We worry about that lake turnover, has not been an issue. And now, we've got pretty good conditions on Simroon River, so that is going on. And then lastly, Mayor, I would report that I do have a call set up with Amtrak tomorrow. There'll be somebody in Philadelphia and somebody in Washington DC to talk about that agreement with Amtrak in regard to the Raton train station. We have some insurance terms that we're going to discuss tomorrow. We think we have all of the other terms where doubt or in agreement, or at least to the point where we can bring it to the commission for you to look at. Hopefully, we get through the insurance things tomorrow, get a revised copy, and we'll try to get that to you soon after we get that. So, we'll report back to you on how that conversation goes. And that's all I have. Mayor, I can answer any questions if you have.
Any questions for Mr. Berry?
What, what exactly is a wheel loader? I'm sorry for my ignorance, but the piece of equipment that we're purchasing?
Yeah, it's a loader, and we call it a wheel loader because it's a rubber tare machine. It's something we can drive on the streets. It's a, it's a loader that's sized really so that it can go in places like alleys where you need a smaller piece of equipment. It's, it's one of the primary pieces of equipment that we use day in, day out in Public Works. So, it's used for cleanup of alleys. It's used for loading material like the crushed concrete pile that we have, or the millings that we have, cold mix pile, asphalt type uses. We put forks on it to move equipment or pallets of things. And then we'll look at adding snow plowing equipment to it. We're not, that's not coming as a part of the package, but we, you know, removing snow is definitely something that will be tasked to that piece of equipment. So, we'll do that with a bucket right now, but we will look at adding a snow plow.
And have you heard anything from Springer on their water situation? I know that they were, because they pull from the river into the lake.
I have not talked to them right now, but with the diversion coming from the lake right now into the river, we believe that Springer Ditch Company and the Town of Springer are taking water and water quality is not bad. So, that, it's our belief that Town Springer is filling up their lake for the winter, which is typical this time of year, and Springer Ditch Company is filling up Springer Lake. So, I think that they're probably in pretty good shape on that.
This, this picture here that she passed down, that was one quarter, less than one quarter inch last Friday.
I have some friends, I was in Simroon on Friday and we were talking through it and they just said, well, one lives in U Park, and just that, they said the flooding has been more destructive than the fire, you know, for them.
Right. Okay, any other comments? Mr. Jacomo?
No.
Mr. Chavis?
No.
Mr. Schuster?
I would just note that, notice before the meeting today, it was on Facebook, so it must be true, Senator Heinrich, Heinrich specifically called out Colfax County and bringing broadband to it. He's looking forward to doing that, so we'll see if that happens.
So am I.
And I will be attending the quarterly board meeting of the New Mexico Municipally October 5th and 6th. Anything else? This meeting is adjourned.